Morning guys, I'm Jennifer Harrington. I'm with the Albona Rotary Club. We put on BRAC every year. And thanks for tabling it for a week. I had a fun doctor's appointment last weekend. Or last Tuesday, kind of, last minute. But I'm here to talk about BRAC. Like you said, I talked to Doug about it. We've talked to Doug about it. We were gonna try and go north. That has construction, so now we've rearranged our plans. We're gonna go through Luverne in the long route, sorry. And then we're gonna go up to Wesley and come back for the long route. That's gonna be about fifty miles. So for those who aren't feeling up to it, or if we have very bad weather, you can always just go to Wesley and back. We've, we've talked to both the towns. They are gonna have kind of an event, a fundraiser. I think Wesley's gonna do something for their fire department there. Luverne, I think, um, I think they're just gonna have, you know, one of the bars open with some snacks and bloody marys and beers, as the bikers like. So hopefully, you know, a little bit of money into those towns as well. We have volunteers on every corner. The sheriff's department has, you know, luckily given us some, some extra deputies. I think the reserves are gonna come and help direct traffic. But luckily, I think there's only like five turns on the long course. So hopefully, nobody gets too lost. If there is, there is a sag wagon, is what we like to call it, which means that there will be a truck coming behind to kind of pick up any scragglers who might have overestimated their abilities. So with that, I'm just kind of coming saying, you know, this is a fundraiser so that we can give bikes to underprivileged youth here in the county. I think, as you might be aware, because the Kiwanis gives them helmets, we make sure that they have a bike to ride if their family has just not been able to kind of make that budget allocation for them. So that's what we fundraise for. And then this ride is kind of just to have some fun. Along the side, the registration really isn't too much of the fundraiser. It's more the sponsorships. But we've gotten good numbers so far, and it looks like it should be good weather. So we'll, we'll keep our fingers crossed. So if you guys can give me some good weather, I'd appreciate that in the motion. That'd be great. No, um, so I just wanna say, you know, hopefully, you know, thank you. And if you hear anything about it, please speak of it well or try to enroll some people in it. Because it's just, it is a fun event. And then, um, next year is the tenth year of BRAC. And the Rotary Comp, our regional conference, will actually be up in Bancroft that same weekend. So I know this is kind of previewing next year. But so hopefully, next year, we're gonna hope to go to Bancroft. And I think Burt, um, to kind of, and, and have kind of a bigger event in the sense that there's gonna be some Rotarians from, from the north part of the state, kind of here anyway. So that's kind of where I am. I don't know if you guys have any questions for me?
Remind me of the date again, Jennifer.
It's June, oh, sorry, yeah, it's June tenth. We begin the ride at eight. Registration will be at seven fifteen, and we start out at the Y. And we will take last-minute people, but you might not get a T-shirt. So sad.
Do I have a motion to approve the BRAC twenty twenty-three ride across Cassisouth County?
So moved.
Motion by Stecker, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Whacter. Any discussion? You wanna put it in the motion if you're gonna have perfect weather, you can.
Do what we can, guy.
We'll just, we'll just keep that for discussion.
Yeah, okay.
If I'm around, I might do it.
Okay.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Pose. Motion carried unanimously. Have fun.
Thank you, guys. Have a good morning.
Thank you.
We are up to discussion decision to approve designated parking spots three in EMS and AMA.
What number is it? Yeah, we could skip it, but.
He's six twenty.
If he wants to come over, I would like him to.
We can start on this, he can come when he gets here.
Phil's right there.
Just called him.
Phil, have a good seat up here. We're up to your parking spots for timely response to EMS and AMA.
So, I've just talked about this for a couple, three years. Haven't really done anything, and we finally put it on the agenda. Just kinda looking for a guidance for you guys on the parking spots. Where there's an event going on at the election center or the police department has an event they go to that's out of town, they park over there, and then we don't have a spot. With us coming and going off and on all day long, responding to EMS calls, different things, it's nice to have access to a vehicle where we can just drive out and go without having to run around the block trying to find where we parked.
You could lock them on the north end, where you always park.
It's nice on the north end because we can drive through those spots. And it doesn't have to be twenty-four hours. I was looking like across the street at the police department. They have, it says designated parking, emergency vehicles only. But ours could say Monday through Friday, seven to five. That way, if there's events at the election center on the weekends, you know, they could use those spots.
How, how would you mark them, though? I guess that's.
Paint them yellow or just put a sign on the east side with an arrow like they have across the street that says designated parking. Just them outside, two spots.
Yeah, I mean, I, I talked to Phil between last meeting and this one, too. And that was my concern of blocking it for graduation parties or whatever on weekends. If there was elderly people, didn't want them to walk all over the country for no reason, but.
Yeah, there's no reason they have to be marked at night or, or weekends.
Yeah.
Does anybody wanna make a motion to such effect?
I don't know, does Doug have any comments? We talked to Doug, too.
Yeah, I'd just like to remind the, I guess, everybody in the room that that is secondary road department that's, that real estate. Secondary road departments. And not that I am against what's going on. I've even offered to go ahead and paint the, paint the parking stalls. So I don't know if any actions needed at all, but, uh, just, I want that, make sure that everybody understands that.
Because I wasn't aware of that. Because that parking spot was put in when we remodeled over there. They were added at that time. I assume they went, that lot went this way. And, and after talking with Doug, the lot goes that way. So I wasn't aware of that, so I apologize for not talking to Doug before we put this on the agenda. I wasn't sure, I didn't know that property line went.
Well, Doug, I guess if you're okay with it, then I think we could move forward.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Do you need to make a motion that's secondary road department parking lot? That's my, you know.
We'll just go ahead and get somebody to take care of, somehow get it worked out.
Unless somebody has an objection to it by unanimous consent of the board, we'll let Doug go ahead and take care of it.
Do you and Phil communicate?
Yep.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't think we need action on it.
Good, I gotta grab this.
Yeah, go ahead, Phil.
Thanks, Phil, for saying.
Yeah. Thanks, Doug.
You're welcome.
Next thing on the agenda is courthouse hours. We've had discussion on this for the last, I don't know how many years.
We've got some letters here. Some of us have read, but I haven't gotten through all of them either. So we can start, but I, I'll keep reading on these. So.
Do you all wanna read all the letters? That's.
Is that the last one there, Doug?
Oh, there's another one.
I mean, I think it's a general concern across them.
Yeah, I mean, others can start, but I'm, I'm a.
Well, I guess one of the arguments in a lot of those letters was that, uh, they get, they get to leave the courthouse for an hour and go run errands. And that really isn't the way it's supposed to work. I mean, that's where you're being paid. You should really be, you should really stay at the courthouse. You're not supposed to be leaving the courthouse. So that's, you're being paid. And so that's one, one argument that can struck me is that, you know, the arguments, you're, you're in the police, run around town for an hour and go here and there. But that's, that's, just, that's not the way it's supposed to work. I mean, you gotta have lunch, you take lunch here. Or you, or you gotta take time off. I mean, you can't be paid to go run errands. But I mean, we have people that go home and, you know, it's a paid lunch hour. They go home and they have, they have their lunch. Yeah, but that's not the way, that's, you're being paid.
I know other counties that are being paid the hour and then go home and have lunch. We're not unique to that. It's not abused. Uh, they get to leave the building, they don't have to stay.
But that doesn't mean it's, that doesn't mean it's justified.
I don't know, right? I'm not sure about that.
I, I would like to say I did. Last time we talked about it was a week or two ago, whenever that was. It was a new discussion for me. So I went and called all of the counties around us and what they did. And there is some variation. There are a couple of counties that are exactly like we are. But, uh, they all, for the most part, either have a paid half hour or, or a couple have a paid hour, you know, like we have. And there, and there are a couple that, um, like there's one that, um, has that eight to four thirty time with an unpaid lunch hour, or a half hour and extended half hour at the end of the day. So I just, just for information, but, um, I guess my, my biggest question is why, if it, if it is a big concern, why, you know, like last time we were talking, been fifty, sixty years, it's been going on? So, I mean, why, why, I guess, is it a? Are, are you paid hourly or salary, or does it depend on the department?
They're paid hourly. They're all hourly.
Yeah, we're salary, salary. Everybody's paying salary, but the most part. Right.
They're paid, they're, they're based on an hourly wage.
Salary is based on an hour, but it's being paid a salary.
Right.
But it's based on an hourly wage.
Sure, sure. So I, I guess, I, well, being, you two brought it up. I mean, what were you thinking as far as you were wanting to change something?
Well, we were reprimanded or talked about that we had to, you know, we brought everybody up to equal pay for equal hours. But now you have the other thing. If you're not working those hours, it isn't equal pay. So you're gonna tell the road department, they're gonna work forty hours. You tell the jailers, they're gonna work forty hours. And everybody else, why, why are the county employees in the courthouse not working forty hours? You have to explain that to the public. And that's the question that I get.
Yep. And I kind of.
And I don't have a good answer. I mean, it's a nice deal for the employees, I get it. But the, the question is, is it right?
I just wonder why it's, I mean, I've not been talking about it for years. But that, that's not really, kind of moot point, it's why.
It was, yeah, yeah, no point has been brought up. But when we equalized all the pay, that's one question was asked of the attorney in Duval.
I guess I, my suggestion would be moving forward that this would be a discussion in the coming budget years rather than implementing something even in immediate fashion. I mean, if it's been going on for fifty years, I.
It doesn't affect the budget because.
Well, but I'm, what I'm saying is, then you can discuss as far as if, if the complaint is difference in salary or difference in wage because of working fewer hours, then in the future, you know, as the years progress, you just, you work towards that difference, though. I, I don't know.
I don't understand what it has to do with budget or dealing with, I guess, getting paid for noon hour or not.
Pro- probably what Carter could be referencing. Well, what, what you're, I, I kinda follow what you're saying there. But if, if we made a change now, the question that was asked, I think, last week was, was this change figured in when salaries were figured out in this budget process? And the answer to that was no, it wasn't, wasn't really discussed. So you would, you'd be able to have all those factors of the conversation at the same time. And I think that's probably the important thing. Plus, if we made a change now, does it go, do you want it to go into effect tomorrow? Or seven, one?
It shouldn't make it diff, because it's still based on the forty hour of work, uh, forty hours of work.
It, technically, yes, but the, the actual hours worked, of working hours by employees would potentially change if they're, if they have longer days, if they have less time for lunch, et cetera. So the, on paper versus reality would be different.
I guess I don't understand, because it's still based on forty, forty hours of work. And that's figured in, getting paid for an hour lunch. And then if you're, if you're leaving the courthouse and, and, you know, going out to lunch or going running errands, you're not, you're not, you're not actually working for the county then.
Ah, sure, sure. And I, I just.
I know you have a lot of letters to read, but, and the, the hour thing is, I understand what you're saying, Jack, to a point. But in twenty years, I didn't know that I was supposed to stay here for lunch. So I'm just gonna tell you, I had no idea that was a thing. I watch most people in the community for lunch. But I think what we're missing inside, you'll see if you actually read these letters, and some of us brought them to help you understand. It's not just about, I don't know who's complaining in all these years because we make adjustments. There's a lot of times, we have two people in our office, for example. We are now running sometimes with one person because we do both have time to take off. We do drives every day, we do five to six drive tests a day. Sometimes work through our lunch, and sometimes we're here like motor vehicle is after four o'clock. The lunch hour, we're not running around, like we're taking care of our elderly parents. We're taking care of pets that we have to go home to. Um, and the eight to four, I'm sorry, it's a very big perk. We talked about this before when we're going through things. It is a very good thing to make your appointments if you can after four. It's hard to get into the clinic because of women clothes, right? So you have to adjust. There are just a lot of things, and I think what I've said before is, all of us have a job that has a lot of, I, I don't wanna make every day sound like it's stressful, but it, it can be. We have a lot of different things happening in our office. And that hour is, you gotta step away. We don't take breaks downstairs unless I have to run home or do an errand really quick. Nick lets us take our break that we're supposed to get, but we don't take those on a daily basis. So it is that retreat to just get away and have a moment and come back and feel better. And I just wanna, you'll see it if you read my letter, but I just wanna say, I give you twenty years, you've got twenty-three, and you've got an under six months over here. And there's been so many things changed. And I know that change is a reality, but I feel again, like I've said in the past, it's so much tape. You have to look at the staff you have. You have a good staff in this courthouse and road crew and everywhere else. But I'm just saying, think about what you're doing because it's really hard to keep your, your, your good staff, your good attitudes when things constantly just keep coming in. And I feel like we have to beg for just a couple of good things that I feel like we're entitled to, to a point. We do our jobs, we're here every day. That's all, I, I don't know, I can go on, but I'll just stop. Thank you.
Well, and about leaving the building, the handbook does state even on our breaks, as long as our department head okay's it, we can leave the building. That is stated in the handbook.
Maybe it'd be easier, maybe it'd be easier to change all the other departments to thirty-five hours a week now. Put the road department on thirty-five hours a week. The jailers on thirty-five hours a week, and make it all fair for everybody that way. I'm sure there won't be, there won't be any complaints that way.
Just in the public, if pay the taxes.
I mean, you have a lot of complaints, I'm just, I'm sorry, I just don't understand. Because we can't get to a certain place either. We're not expecting a clinic to change their hours because I can't get there or, you know, now we're gonna have a half hour line to be in. Like, is this a big thing that people are really upset that we're not here till four thirty?
There's, there's a lot of people that jump, jump me about the hours in the courthouse, yes.
They're paid for forty hours and worth thirty-five.
Yeah.
I get that a lot.
One guy working up to me.
It's been that for the fifteen years I've been on the board, it's always been an issue.
I've, I've heard a few people say, talk about how the structure is that if they're paid for forty technically but working thirty-five. I can't say it's a very frequent complaint. It does come up here and there, but, um.
But that's also true. Those people don't, don't realize that it is a thirty-five hour.
That's gonna, how would people even know that? I've worked here twenty-three years, nobody's ever said anything. And I got a lot of people that will talk about this place and complain to me a lot about this place. But I never heard that.
I, I don't know that I would put it as the top complaint of the county by any means.
And most likely, since four thirty, we're gonna, some of us are gonna be here till five or after.
Oh, very easily.
I just wanna reiterate what our compensation board said. They're here about this building and these people. They can't say enough good about the services we give and the time we're here and the times we're called in when needed, no matter what that might be. They show up, they're here, and, um, they're great employees.
But it's not an issue about.
No, I know that, I know, I know.
We know the employees are great, and that's not an issue. The issue is, it's, it's, it's a question of fairness to all of the, to the employees that work, that do work forty hours a week. And me, and that's, you know, I mean, if I was working, if I, if I was working on the road department, I guess I'd be a little upset that I gotta work forty hours a week.
They took those jobs knowing that, though. They took those jobs knowing that, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they, they knew that, right?
And I didn't take this job because I'm only gonna work thirty-five hours. I look at a week, I'm working all the time, thirty-five, five hours. I come in early, a lot of times I'm late.
And I hate to see it, the road crew against the courthouse because I don't wanna have, like, the board start getting people against each other. That's not what we're supposed to be for. I had somebody actually say, isn't your board supposed to be for you? Like, I don't know, I don't know. That's the first compliment I've heard in twenty years. And you know, Jack, that we have a good, you have a goods to have here.
I've said it many times, many times.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
I tell people out on the street that we're good, we're good employees. And it's not an issue about the employees. It's an issue, it's correcting the mistake that was made many years ago that should have never been made. As a wide board, that that, I did it, did what they did, but it was a major mistake. I had no idea that courthouse was ever open on a Saturday.
I mean, I didn't either, that was before I was born. But, I mean, to, to, to your point, Jack, and what Carter said, I think knowing that this has gone on for this period of time, I, I don't see a need to rush into this right away. And I think that's, that's one of the important things. If or when changes are made in regards to employees, whether it's anything, the more time and more communication that can be had for planning, for looking at different perspectives, for all that stuff, is better. So I think, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying we should shut the door on this conversation, but I think it should be more discussed or discussed more in the future, especially during next budget cycle and plan it out if anything is changed.
It'd be easier to change it six months or a year from now. I mean, that's basically what you're saying is you don't wanna change it, I mean, it's.
Today, no, I wouldn't. I, I think we can have more conversations about it, but I don't, I don't feel it's a top priority for today.
The other issue was, it was, you know, by our attorney, and he said it's up to the department heads to staff, to staff accordingly. Your choice how you staff it. I think he, I think he even made the comment that if they wanted to, what obviously he said, if you wanted to close it at four o'clock, they could, even.
Well, it's up to department heads when their employees work, not to us. We can set the hours of the courthouse, but.
The department heads set that staffing order, yeah.
But if you, if you are consistent between your offices, I think it's either gonna cause a bigger issue.
Yeah.
Well, that would be, that would be up to the electors. And they would, they'd be the ones that, you know, they would, you know, they would think you were, you know, doing what you're supposed to do. I guess we wouldn't be real, we, we don't get reelected. That's always a joy, that's always a.
Mr. Whacter, you haven't made a comment yet. We can't leave you out.
Well, I, you know, I can see both sides of it. I can see the, the hours should have been adjusted, you know, many years ago. But I can also see the point of, you know, it's been this way for so long. We've got people that've worked here over twenty years with those hours. Let's not rush into it and make a change immediately. You know, after only discussing it for one week. You know, we, we need to have further discussion on it. That way, people understand a little bit more about it. And even then, you know, maybe we can make different adjustments, you know, going forward. You know, instead of staying up until four thirty, opening earlier.
My answer is, and I guess we know a lot of people that do the board, any employee, you can get hired, you get hired, for, say, working forty hours a week.
Will they all get hired under that right now?
No, I mean, if you run to get hired, then you would get hired, you would, you'd get hired again, right?
You can't, you can't have different policies.
You can't do that because that's, yeah, you sure can, all of them. Snap-on does it right now. There's people working on the line right now, but Snap-on, that's not, that's not.
We are a public employee.
Well, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, I don't, I don't feel that's appropriate to hire new people under that, under a different situation than current employees are working.
Well, I don't see that we're getting any further with this. Do I have a motion to dismiss this item from the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Whacter makes motion to dismiss it from the agenda.
What do you mean dismiss it from the agenda?
Well, we have it on agenda for discussion decision, and we're either gonna act on it or we're gonna dismiss it.
I, I would say, I would say we should have a motion to take no action.
Yeah, take no action.
Okay.
I would second that.
And that was, who made the motion?
Josh did.
Josh did.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, do a roll call vote.
Pla?
No.
Math?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Jarks?
No. Motion carried three to two. Doug, we're up to ITC.
Yes, good morning.
Uh, we're, we're doing business.
Uh, we have received an application from ITC for, uh, crossing Drainage District Facility. Uh, there is a procedure that the board has for these. They are planning to move their line at Almore. Uh, it runs about a half a mile to the south and then runs east to Highway one sixty-nine. And what they'd like to do is at the state line, run east to Highway one sixty-nine or run south. I believe it's still gonna be on private land just adjacent to the public road right away there. But they'd be crossing Lateral Five, and there's two mains there that they will be crossing of Drainage District one ten. They still have some plans to provide, but there's a couple of things that the board can take care of. Your application approval process, applications, they can be assessed up to seventy-five hundred dollars for each crossing of Drainage District Facility. So that can be determined. And then also, uh, the board at any time can designate independent professional engineering for, to. professional engineering for, to inspect this, so.
Doug, did you, did you have anything in our packet for a location map or anything? I, I know you've described it.
Couple of weeks ago, that was put in.
But that's in the sixteenth?
I don't remember exactly.
It's the K D sixty-nine line that comes out Elmore and goes into Elmore.
I, I remember the location, I just didn't.
Right now, if you think of just what Elmore is on, on the field, on the west side of Elmore, you bring it over to the pit and that.
Yeah, okay, I remember that, yeah.
I remember talking about it, I just didn't see anything in there.
Does there, I don't see. A site over here, is that what the purpose was or were they just?
No, they just, uh, are trying to get it closer to the road to make it more easier accessible. I think, uh, that's on old railroad right away, to be honest with you.
You're correct.
When the railroad ran out to, from Cassoot County up to Elmore and further more, so. But there is, there's still some more things that I T C needs to get done. They are looking at a December twenty twenty-three, um, start date. So there's time, but, um, one thing they were wondering was what the fee was going to be. And then, like I say, in other projects, uh, another firm has been appointed to inspect and that construction process.
And this is, is this two fees or one? Because there's two lines there, I see, a main and a relief.
You, well, I call it one crossing. So I, if you would like to call it three crossings, we, we can.
So you have one crossing for the main and relief and one for lateral five, the two circles? Okay. Do you wanna look at this?
Yeah, they, they only. Yeah.
None of those two.
They didn't give you a plan where they're gonna set the poles yet?
I have not received that. I've requested it.
Did you? But I mean, if we know where the poles are gonna be, it'd be a lot easier to know.
Well, they are. Part of this is that they will not be placing them on the county tile.
Right, but it should be back a ways.
They'll be identifying, and I think your procedure does talk about some setbacks there, so.
They'll have to follow our ordinance on drainage district facilities. And I guess, do you wanna waive the fee or you wanna charge the fee?
Well, we increased the limit on it to seventy-five hundred.
Up to, but you can waive it if you want to. I T C's been good to work with. Uh, the only thing I think it'd be nice if you had some engineering firm or somebody locate the approximate places of the tile before they
Yeah, and we had Boltman Mcdo the wind farm once, right?
Yes.
And they would pay the fee to the.
They pay the engineering cost.
So if we waived our fee, they would, they would take care of the engineering cost.
Right.
Actually, I think if, I mean, Cassoot County pays the, and then re-reverse you for that cost.
It's a, it's a pass, it passes through the county books, so we're, we're still the, um, customer of the engineering firm. I, I'd be concerned about waiving the fee because we will have potential other crossings coming up in the near future. I don't know how that would look as far as setting a precedent in comparison. I don't know if that.
If you're talking about a pipeline or a pole, there's quite a bit of difference in how it would affect the county tile.
I know.
I mean, a pole that doesn't even come close to the county tiles, a lot different than having a pipeline that's going under the tile.
Are they able to eliminate any traffic going across them as well?
I, I do not know. I, I would assume there's going to be trucks, boom trucks, uh, orders to place poles, material delivery, um, then the line. Uh, I don't see how, how they would be, and that, that's part, again, that's part of the reasoning for this whole process is that they are, they acknowledge that they are going to be, uh, crossing Drainage District Facilities. And the code of Iowa does, um, require the easements be given by anyone crossing a Drainage District Facility.
You can always have them plank it or put.
Yeah, that, that might be what the count, the engineer that's representing the trustees requires.
Could, could we designate an engineer today and then get a estimation of what they'd be going across with the equipment and evaluate that next week?
If you, if you're mad at it, it doesn't really matter.
It would protect it, but it's not a hundred percent. I mean.
There's nothing a hundred percent.
Well, I know.
And that, that, again, that's part of the easement process that if there is damage done to the, the facility, that they will be repaired.
Well, that's part of what fees for too.
Well, the fee doesn't pay for repairing it.
No.
Fee is a crossing fee. If they damage it, they'll have to repair it. The fee has nothing to do with doing damage to the facility.
I don't know that we need to max out the fee, but I think we should have a little bit of a fee, um, especially without knowing exactly what.
It goes to Drainage District.
Yeah, I know.
The fee doesn't go to the county, it goes to Drainage District.
But that, it's, it's their infrastructure that would be being affected, so.
Right.
They should have some compensation for that.
Yes, my, my question is, how is it gonna affect it? If it doesn't damage it, it's not affected, that's.
That's an if.
I don't know if the fee has, Marge may be better to answer that question, where exactly the application fee goes to.
It does go to districts, or it's supposed to.
It's not, it's not a certain district at the moment, is what I'm saying.
I, I believe it does go to the district specifically, where they're crossing.
Well, we, we've got, we've had multiple districts, I don't know.
The fee doesn't always went directly to the district.
Uh, again, I think, uh, Marge may, uh, be able to answer that question.
I guess if you want something today, I'd recommend two thousand per crossing.
That'd be times three. There's three crossings there.
Two is what's listed right now, I guess, so. I'm okay with it either way, but yeah, on that, uh, Jack handed it back that there's the main and then the lateral that was listed as crossings. Those two circles. Those, the main and relief would be pretty much, yeah, that's private.
There's green one, ten, that's a big one. Doesn't affect anything. This is all just little tile.
It'd be right there. Well, those are thirty-six and thirty-four.
This is a fifty-four.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, somebody has to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Boltman Mc as engineer for this crossing and to charge a two thousand dollar crossing fee per crossing.
Do I have second Mister Stacker's motion? Two.
Two. I'll second the motion.
Second by Carter. Any discussion? Seeing none, do a roll call vote, please.
Pla.
Pass.
Math?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes.
Jarks?
No.
Pla.
No.
All right, thank you, thank you. I'm.
Okay.
We are up to, Doug, you're still up. Secondary road equipment.
Uh, yes, I took some quotes. I requested quotes from three, uh, individuals, Ziegler Cat, Altorfer Cat, and Banta Trailer Sales for Trail, uh, Trail King TK fifty, uh, tag trailer. This will hold fifty thousand gross pounds. I did ask for a, uh, option of one, which would be a sixty thousand pound tag trailer, just to see, uh, what the difference in cost was. I received one quote from, uh, Ziegler. I checked with the others and they were not gonna provide a quote, so I have one price. So I'd like to open that up, um.
Here, Tim, there, oh, there's a motion on the back.
Where is Altorfer out of?
Uh, Sioux Rapids. Al- Altalisah, Iowa?
Altalisah.
Yeah.
Is that southern Iowa?
Southwest, I believe, yeah. Okay, um, actually, I have three, uh, looking at this, reviewing it. Ziegler's provided a price for the Trail King, uh, fifty, the Trail King sixty, and then as another alternate, um, a Towmaster, fifty thousand pound, uh, trailer. The price of the Trail King fifty is forty-one thousand, four hundred dollars with availability of December twenty twenty-three. The price of a T sixty, that's sixty thousand, uh, sixty thousand pound trailer is fifty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars with a delivery date of December, and then the Towmaster.
Maybe you shouldn't give that, because that wasn't the question. If we, if we don't accept any of these, you go back and ask for new quotes. I don't know if you'd be right to even read that one, because it wasn't, was, you, that wasn't part of the. Well, we need to. Right, but I'm just saying, you know, if they give you a third one that wasn't asked for, let's, let's say this out.
Depends on what he asked for, Jack. If you ask for a quote on a fifty-ton, that ten-long trailer and they send them to a different brand, I don't have a problem with it.
In our request for quotes.
Doug, that last one was December twenty twenty-three also, right?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, I'm guessing the majority would be a different brand.
The county does reserve the right to waive compliance on minor technicalities of specification that I provided, so. Unless, I guess, if the board is not going to approve a purchase today.
Well, my own concern is that if we open up a court for a third trailer, the other two companies had, had the same opportunity to.
You didn't, did you specify Trail King in your bid?
I did, but then again, I, there is a sentence there that the county reserves the right to waive compliance on minor technicalities of specifications.
I don't know, I'm just a little concerned about, you know, a third option that wasn't gonna be able to, that the other companies didn't have a chance to be able to, they have the same.
Well, that, that's fine. I don't know, that's just my opinion, I love it.
We could also have an issue with that. It's a precedence for other people to just start throwing out, you know, what, not what we're looking for, but throwing out other options and stuff, and we could end up having, you know, fifty.
Is it, it's mostly just a different brand, right?
And it's in stock.
That it's in stock?
So we would have.
I, I would think we should look at the options if the others wanted to provide stuff they could have.
I don't have a big issue with it because it's technically the same fifty thousand pound trailer.
It's a different brand.
Yeah, yeah.
Same piece of equipment.
I, I do not think that there'll be an issue.
I, I would, I would read the note.
That quote was for a Towmaster, fifty thousand pound trailer, and it's thirty-seven thousand dollars. And it is in stock.
Thirty-seven thousand even?
Correct.
Was that fifty thousand in stock?
No.
No, I did.
Fifty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars, we'd get it in December. Forty-one thousand, four hundred dollars, we'd get it in December, and we can, the Towmaster, thirty-seven thousand. So I recommend the purchase of the thirty-seven thousand dollar trailer.
That's a tri- triple axle tag along.
It is triple, yes.
Do you know if there's any major significant differences between those two brands?
I'm not aware. I, I do not know.
So the other two come together, submit them?
That's correct.
Just, just a joint bid, yeah?
Correct. I have requested from three companies, received one and pulled back.
All right, well, that makes a little bit of a difference.
Concerned by any red division.
I don't think there is. It's so hard to get anything now that I would make a motion to approve the purchase of the Towmaster for thirty-seven thousand dollars. Jack, you second it? Any discussion on the purchase? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Construction in a right of way.
Did you wanna discuss, is there some sort of policy?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over that.
Purchases?
Yeah. Last week, we had some discussion on how the road department makes purchases. And it was brought up that we should put it on the agenda and do it today, so. I would open the floor up to discussion on how the road department makes its purchases and how the limit is set and what it applies for.
I guess I'll start because I was wanting stuff last week. I think the, the biggest issue that I had was the lack of, um, consistency across the county. We have a policy or a motion that's passed every year to set the spending limit at five thousand dollars, and secondary road department is pretty much the only one, to my knowledge, that does not regularly follow that, um. Not trying to micromanage every single little thing, but I feel like if we have a policy in black and white, it should be followed, so I think we either need to have it or not have it, um. We can go from there.
If I could say something quick, um, I asked Todd if he could be here today, um, in my discussions, again, calling other counties around this and what they do. Um, did speak with another supervisor and as well as another, uh, accounting attorney and I guess a concern was whether a, the board, um, once the budget is approved and, um, that the board can't really say no after approving a budgetary, budgeted item, you know, within, within that budget. That a board can't come back and say, no, actually, we decided we're not going to do that, um, but you can deny a budget amendment. You know, of course, should that be overspent or should that not fall under a budget that it was supposed to or whatever? Um, so I asked Todd after having that discussion and if you had had a chance to look into anything and what you found and what, you know, if you had any insight on that.
Yeah, I did, the, um, there's a case, uh, Stream versus Gordy, seven sixteen Northwest Second, one eighty seven, it's a two thousand eight case. It involves, um, the county attorney's office suing the board of supervisors for, uh, denying an expenditure. Had to do with a different provision, but it has a different, uh, um, line item or different expense, but, um, it did have some, um. Some parts of it are on point. In line with what your discussion with Humboldt County was, um, you know, the court said, and this is, uh, Supreme Court, generally, once the supervisors approve and appropriate the county attorney's budget. You can kind of put any department head in there because they're all basically operating the same thing, um. The county attorney or any, uh, appropriate often, office, whether it's an elected official or whether it's a department head, can reallocate appropriation within the office so long as expenditures off, that are, as long as expenditure, expenditures he authorizes are within his budget limits and for legitimate purposes, so that kind of goes along with what you were saying, so if it's in the budget, he can reallocate, um, um, funds and, and purchases as long as it's for legitimate purposes, it's within the overall budget. Once a budget is approved, however, the supervisors continue to exercise an oversight function by virtue of their power of approval over the payment of expenditures, in other words. Um, the auditor can't issue a warrant until the five of you approve the expenditure, so looking at it from that standpoint, um. You, section three thirty one, uh, four oh one of the code says that, uh, the supervisor shall examine and settle all accounts and receive the expenditures of the county. And all claims against the county except as otherwise provided by state law, so looking at it from the standpoint of how the process works, um, you know, we, we uh, purchase things, we, uh, go through expenses in our offices, uh, and then we submit them to the supervisors for approval and generally, you know, that, that is without any hiccup. But if there's a question, um, and something comes up, obviously, you probably, you know, look into it and talk to the individual office, uh, uh, the department head or elected official to find out what it's about, so looking at it from the standpoint of where you are, are right now, you still have the oversight capability. If you put a five thousand dollar limit, I assume that it's, you can't, I assume that the five thousand dollar limit, and correct me if I'm wrong, just requires preapproval? Is that what we're talking about? It's not like you're denying them the ability to spend that.
Correct.
It's preapproval, um, and so looking at it from the points in this case, I would say that that is fine, that you have that authority to do that. You can, you have the authority to approve expenditures in general, whether it's five bucks or five thousand dollars, um, so, uh, I don't think that it would violate any laws. Uh, you already do it and have done it for how long, um, you know, the, I don't know when that started, but it's probably been quite some time. And is it a five thousand dollar limit, anything above five thousand dollars, you have to have pretty much, so you're not denying that, uh, department the ability to purchase items above that, you just want to make sure that, um, you know, you're in, in the loop. Because on the other side, the flip of the coin, if you, if I say spend six thousand dollars, go out and, and commit the county to six thousand dollars and you guys don't approve it? Then I'm, I'm kind of in, in a quandary, um, so I think that looking at it from the standpoint of reasonableness and consistency, uh, you know, I, I, uh, I don't see anything wrong with that policy, now. The offices are different, obviously Doug's office is going to have more parch expenditures than my office, I think the largest expenditure that I have is a computer here and there, um. So, you know, I think it, it impacts the offices a little differently, but I don't see it as being a violation of the law, no.
I, I guess our, our, we always have a. Discussion here is, equipment breaks down. In the winter or in the summer, you want it repaired right away, it's a ten thousand dollar repair. Does he have to come to the board and have it approved, or can he come to the board afterwards and say, I had a ten thousand dollar repair?
I think that's what our discussion is about.
That's your discussion, that's your decision, how do you want to apply it, I mean, you know, like I said, I don't know of any of the offices in the courthouse other than Doug's because of the size of the equipment and the size of the, the, the budget. You know, that that's going to be a concern, if my coffee machine breaks down, it's more than likely under five thousand dollars to fix it.
Right.
Um, but, you know, Doug's equipment is much more expensive, um, you know, and, and whatever the board is comfortable with, you guys off, you guys, uh, handle um, those approvals and those expenditures and you perform your legislative function in doing that, how you want to do that, I don't think that it's, you know, my job to tell you how you, how you, how you were to do that, but, um, you know, looking at the difference between the offices, obviously Doug's is different than most of the other offices in the courthouse, if you want to make it a different level in that regard, I don't know, that's up to you guys, so.
That'd be my next question, I guess, for, rather than have a policy or not have a policy, or have a recommendation, not have a recommendation, um, can a board compromise and say, well, because the road department, the engineer's office is so different from the other offices, can you have a different limit? You know, a recommended, recommended limit to being, I don't know, I mean, it wouldn't be consistent across all the department, I wouldn't like, but.
I wouldn't necessarily say a different limit, but different circumstances, you know, say he's got a, you know, road break that breaks down and it's going to cost over ten thousand to repair. You know, may personally say, do that repair and then tell us about it the next meeting, you know, that this happened, we had to repair a truck, that's great. If it's something that, you know, you're updating a garage door that's, you know, failing and you've known about this for more than two weeks and you've, you know, gotten quotes and stuff and you know this is, expense is coming, you know. Like at least two weeks in advance, uh, and you have a chance to bring it up at, at the board meeting for approval. Now, we're not going to deny it, it's just a, it's, it's something that we want to see come to us before it's paid out, kind of thing. If, if it's, if it's something that's planned, you know, greater than two weeks, now, the repairs, uh, new tires and things like that, that's a different situation because if that equipment goes down, we're not saying we want to hold off and approve the purchase of getting the repairs done, we want that equipment out there working. So do the necessary repairs and bring it to us on the next board meeting saying, this is what I had to, you know, spend to get this equipment back up and running. Just as long as, you know, we know about that expense and, and what caused it, but like I said, if there's, you know, upgrades or new purchases, like today you're bringing, you know, you brought the trailer to us, you know, can we see that as, you know, time goes on, that if it's something that's planned greater than two weeks in advance, that you know that this is coming, you know, bring it to our attention prior to paying it out. That way we can approve or gives us a chance to ask questions and stuff instead of, you know, after the fact, does that make sense?
Yeah, I'd like to, if you could please put that in writing.
Yeah, and I think that's what our discussion today was to kind of do.
And I think the garage door being repaired maybe was not the best example, I think the power washer that was talked about, probably, I don't know, during budget time, six months ago. That was, would have been something that was not time, it was not time sensitive, it was planned out well in advance, it was not work, it was not functional even after we paid the bill for it for a while with the other things that had to be put in place, so I mean, things like that, that are very clearly planned purchases, I feel should be approved for the process of it, mostly.
Well, will the board meet more than Tuesday mornings, please, so that I can, in a, I mean, we are providing a service to the public. And if it's going to take action by board, I would just request that the board be here on a Friday morning so I can, if something happens on a Thursday afternoon, I can get that.
What do you expect that happens on a Thursday afternoon, that you're going to have?
I don't know, I mean, maybe, maybe a mower, maybe a tractor blows up.
Okay, so the tractor blows up, what are you going to do, you're taking it to the shop and?
I don't know, I don't, really, I'm hon- honest, I don't know what you guys want me to do, I mean, you, you're saying a lot of things.
Yeah.
I would like to have something in writing. And if you are going to come in, you're going to cause me to. To my, my foreman that make decisions on what to do, you're going to cause them to call me so that they can get approval. I'm going to have to call you to get approval, I mean, last week, we needed eighteen inch corrugated metal pipe. The semi load. That's about twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars, is that something you want me to bring? I went and ordered.
I, I don't feel that applies, it, it had said five thousand for any one item in the language, I believe, so I don't. I think talking about tires and fuel and corrugated metal pipe and all these other things, you, you might buy a hundred blades, that doesn't, and they might be a total of fifty grand or eighty grand, whatever they are, that's not one item, it's a bulk order, multiple items, um, a semi load of fuel is not. I mean, you can cut that a lot of ways, but the normal, every single day expenditures, I think we see them enough on the claims, that's, that's obvious, but upgrading the air conditioning, a new power washer, stuff like that, that is very clearly planned in advance, I don't see where it would be that hard to put on the agenda. We talk about it, we approve it and move on.
I think the biggest question you would ask is, does it keep you operational? Can you operate for more than a week with, out that power washer or that air conditioner, you know, can you operate longer than a week without it? If yes, bring it to us for preapproval.
No, I know. What, what, what will the board say if I say? It, this is needed for, to keep me operational and the board second guesses it? I mean, is that an oper, is there an opportunity with that? That what just said that that, that could happen?
And I'm not saying that's exactly what we're going to say, I'm just saying, you know.
I mean, there are engineering jobs, jobs open.
We're trying to find, we're trying to find wording that.
Do you, you need to go and apply Pocahontas County?
I, I think there's a lot of scenarios that could fall into a hundred different ways that language would be written. Uh, another option to get around having a board meeting every single day or multiple times a week would be, um, delegating approval by the chair and vice chair, you could have a phone call with two members that are voted on by the board each year and, um, they could give consent in, in place of an emergency or a large repair or anything, and I don't.
The whole board could give the county engineer consent to do his job.
Were elected by the people to oversee the county.
And if you consent to the engineer to do his job, you're doing what they, what they request, I think that the secondary road department, our employees, our equipment, we're getting the work done. I don't know. I, I, I don't think that there's been any budget problems in the last ten years, has there?
In, in regards to the budget, I, I made some notes on this because during budget, I mean, that was one thing you've said how many times, if, if you're operating within your budget, that's fine, right? Well, in the middle of February, line item for so, engineer supplies and services, was that ninety-eight percent used for this fiscal year? In, in middle of February.
Supplies and services, they're in a bunch of different divisions, which particular division were you talking about?
I did not write down the full line item, I can get that to you.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I mean, I can, I can get that to you, I have.
No, that's fine, I just.
But it was one point four six five million used of one point five million, so we had less than forty thousand dollars left in one specific line item.
What happens?
At the middle of February.
Snow removal, what did snow removal do this year? It was about. It, it was about two hundred thousand dollars over for snow removal.
And, and in regards to the budget, at that time, um, in the middle of February, we had already spent more for the fiscal year twenty-three budget than any of the previous three fiscal years. With ten point seven.
I think what you're really looking at is something like fuel. I mean, I, would you, would you argue with me that typical things that you are purchasing as a personal product right now is higher than what it was three years ago? I mean, that, that is what's going on, whether it's rock, whether it is tires, whether it is fuel, whether it is electricity. I mean, everything is higher priced, I mean, just to come out and say the sales and service line, I mean, uh, that's. I, I, yes, I have a, I have a few lines in my budget on expenditures. And yes, every year, there are different amounts spent in that.
Yeah, and I, I mean, in Doug's defense, I mean, me too, uh, you know, my line items aren't always, uh, positive, that's the whole point, you know, as the department head or elected official, he can reallocate funds, as long as the bottom line doesn't, you know, doesn't go, um, into the negative, I mean, that's the important thing. And I, and, and again, you know, what you do, you have the power to oversee, but I think, you know, what Doug is trying to say, maybe has said it, I don't want to, to be insulting, but as an elected official, you know, if you were to say you can't do this, you can't do that, and it's blurry, how can I operate in that, in that capacity, I mean, I, I, I can't. I, I have the benefit of don't, I don't have parch expense, I mean, you know, as far as when I buy things, they're not very, very much, but, um, you know, if you break down in order for the engineer's department to function so that your constituents aren't without aggravated road or without snow removed or without things like that, I think, you know, you need to be specific, if you have this policy for years, but it didn't apply to the county engineer, um, you know, I don't, I, I, again, I mean, general policy is easy to, to look at and say, okay, this is going to be appli- applicable, but, um, we all in the courthouse can, can, the main floor in my office can see that and say, no problem, but, I, I mean, Doug is going to have a hard time with that, um, you know, I, I don't know what you do, and it's not my job to tell you what you do, but it sounded like to me that you were looking at emergencies as opposed to new equipment purchases or something like that, I don't know, uh, but that's going to be a difficult task for you guys to formulate a, a, a policy that would be capable of being used by Doug to do his job, I, I would not want to, uh, uh, attempt to, to draft that because I have no idea how Doug's office in general operates, I mean, s- s- specific things, yes, but, um, you know, I don't, I don't know, um. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what you're actually wanting to accomplish, but.
And.
I'm just here to tell you that you can do that according to the law. I'm just here to tell you that you can do that according to law, but I don't know how that would be done to make sure that it's consistent across the board.
I think that's kind of been our discussion today is trying to figure out how to, you know, better clarify it for you.
I guess my point is what has ever been done by the road department that's really been in breach of the five thousand dollar limit that the board considered inappropriate, that was done by the road department.
And, and there may be different opinions on that. I mean, as far as amongst different board members, that's not really the point, it's, um. I, when Doug or any other department head, we, we do vote on the claims and we can deny a claim, you know, and, and so we still have power to approve or disapprove under the claims, and if there is a department head making questionable purchases that we're approving, uh.
It doesn't matter if it's a hundred dollars, if we don't think it's right, we should question it.
And that's what I mean. I mean, if it's a hundred dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, if it's, if we have a department head that's making questionable purchases and things that we don't approve of, then that's, I feel that's another issue and that your, your employee is not doing the job that he or she is supposed to be doing. And so, I guess that's where I feel, I feel the power of person, we as supervisors, we get all those claims and we should have those discussions with Doug, with Todd, with whoever, and when we have concerns there, and if we have a, a big enough concern to address it there. Uh, that's just, that's my feeling. I don't know that there necessarily needs to be a a, a policy. Um, we did request of Doug to bring us expenses to the board. Not, we didn't request an emotion, but he did bring the air conditioner last week. And, and I appreciate that. I mean, and, and follow through with that, I guess is what I'm saying, so I don't, I don't know that that's.
Well, I guess.
I, I, I think we, we do have to trust that, that department head to do it.
Well, he brought it here, but the discussion was that should have been on the agenda. Well, should it or shouldn't it have been on the agenda is my question.
For me, Doug is an easy biscuit. He's a, he's a point, he's not like that. And the other issue is he, he's the only department head that comes in on a weekly basis and has meets with us. So we know every week that, that what's going on in his department. He brings stuff to us every week. And so he himself is a unique engineer, you know, so we keep up with what he's spending and what he's doing, because he comes in every week and has discussions with us. And I don't see where, you know, anything that he's done has been out of line.
Well, and I, I just, I just feel that our concerns are, should be directed to the claims when they come to us, because we do have power to say yes or no, rather than having that other little stuff. I don't know that you're accomplishing a lot more than that. I guess is my point.
The difference at the claims point, like we had the conversation about uniforms that were purchased. When it gets to the claims, the work or product, whether it's materials, sort of supply, services, whatever, that's already been delivered. By the time it comes to the claims, so to Todd's point before, if he orders a whole new set of office furniture and it comes to our claims, but it's already been installed and it's done over, what are you gonna do about it? It, it's, it's the timing aspect of that approval as much as the approval itself.
And I think, you know, that preapproval for us, um, again, separating us from the engineers department because we don't have those type of massive purchases, provides us some protection. You know, we come to the board and say, this is what I need, this is what I'm thinking, are you going to approve that? And, you know, at that point in time, the discussion is had and, and, you know, the blessing of the board is, is bestowed, but um, you know, again, that's in my world. Um, you know, I don't have something broken down that's expensive to fix. Um, so, yeah, I don't know how that would work and, and what the, the correct scenario would be for you guys, but, uh, so, given the fact that, you know, we've always had this policy, um, I, I don't think that necessarily is the issue. The issue is how would that work in, you know, the engineers department's capabilities? And I don't know how that would, how that would be fashioned to do, to, to, to be usable by the engineers department. You know, unless it's maybe new purchases, which as you were pointing out, um, you know, maybe if it's a new purchase. If it's something, emergency broke down, needs fixed, needs gas, needs rock, needs things to do his job, maybe that's a little different scenario, uh, because that kind of fits into the, the way things have always been. Yeah, I mean, everything's more expensive nowadays.
Your everyday operations.
Yeah, and to your point of, I mean, Todd buying furniture, you know, new office furniture and then coming to us. I guess the difference is, if he does it, Todd is not our employee, he's another elected official, you know, and so we can approve or disprove of claims and even if he, he is approving things he doesn't like, then that's a public job to blow him out.
Right.
And, and so, but Doug is an employee, you know, that if, if he buys all new office furniture or whatever he wants, you know, and whatever he wants to do, um, that's where we have conversations with him as an employer to an employee. And say, hey, you've been doing a series of things here, or even just been a couple of things. Uh, this is a concern, please don't continue doing this. And then you go down the road of employer, employee relations rather than I, I feel that's a different scenario too, um. So I, I guess, that's what, I guess what I'm saying is if, I think we should just leave it as is. Doug continued to bring, you know, these, like, like with the air conditioner and say, hey, this is what I'm thinking of doing. So, okay, and I think, and I, you know, I appreciate that and, and I, I think if we have these major concerns to have those employer-to-employee discussions and I, uh, that's just my feeling.
You wanna make that a motion and see if it passes to leave it as is?
I don't know that it needs to be a motion to leave it as is, it's already.
Well, otherwise we'll have to drop the agenda item.
I guess I don't know that I'm in favor of changing it today. I, I, I don't know. I guess.
But I think, like, what we're, what we're asking for is the, you know, and you've done this in the past, um, but I think there have been a couple of items and I don't know specifics on them. They were purchased prior to our knowledge. Um, they, if, if you've got a, you know, significant purchase, they is coming up and you know about it and it's and, you know, you haven't signed the paperwork or anything like that, just bring it to our attention, you know, when we have our discussion. And then, you know, that way we can have our, ask our questions then and not, you know, after the fact of oh, why was this purchased kind of thing, you know? That way we can have that discussion prior to this. And that, and that's for the, the planned things, you know, stuff that, like I said, you know, that's coming up in, in two weeks. You know, you know about it two weeks out.
You, you brought up the example of an overhead door.
Yeah. And I don't know.
For thirty years old, I mean, I, here's what happened, Josh.
Okay.
The transfer station says the overhead door is not working. I call up the overhead door company, they go out and look at it, they tell me that the, the rails are bent. The rollers, it's thirty years old, it's time to give me one. So I say, give me a quote, and I sign it.
Yep.
And the next week I came to the board and I said, I ordered a, an overhead door for the transfer station. Is, do you have a problem with that?
No, and, and just a little bit of background on it, you know, that way we know what happened. You say that it stopped working. Well, then that makes sense to me to get a new one because that is part of the operation, you know, to have that door working. So that's not a big issue to me. You know, it's, it's just things that, you know, about two weeks in advance at least, you know, a project or something like that, they, just as long as it comes to us prior to purchasing, I think, you know.
So, I, I, two weeks in advance, I think that I, when I know of things two weeks in advance, I do tell the board about it. It's decisions that are made on a daily basis.
Right.
Um, and again, I, last week, my foreman called me up and they say that they're running low on corrugated metal pipe.
Yep.
Uh, we get a phone call from somebody that a tile is, it looks like a tile is broken in a road ditch. We go out and look at it, tile's broken in the road ditch. We don't, sometimes we don't just replace a four foot piece of tile. We'll say, that tile looks like it's bad going through the whole road. We'll dig it all up. Seven thousand dollar load of pipe has to come up to replace it.
Yeah, and I'm not arguing that, you know, that is something that keeps the operational, you know, keeps the, the infrastructure operational. So, I, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Even, I guess I'm saying, every decision that I make, it keeps us operational.
Yeah.
What I, what I would say is if, if we're going to keep the policy in the effect that it has been carried out, I think there should be a motion to ex- exempt the secondary road department from that policy because for.
I've said that forever.
Are you making that motion? We have to get on, we've talked this to, to death.
Saying I think there should be documentation for it. If that's the route the board wants to go, there should be documentation, in my opinion.
And that's what the other counties around us end up doing, what I have found.
Okay, somebody wanna make a motion to that effect? Let's get done with this.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, um.
Exempt the road department?
Exempt the road department from the five thousand dollar preapproval spending limit, um, or however, however that should be worded.
You exempt the road department from five, five thousand dollars spending policies?
Well, it's the end of the spending limit, I would, would be probably appropriate.
And, yeah.
Okay.
I'll second his motion. Do a roll call vote, please. Any more discussion? Not, we'll do a roll call vote.
Pla?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Stecker?
No.
Darks?
Yes. Motion carried, board in one.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll continue to make an effort to let you guys know what's going on.
And, and it's not just for us too, it's also for the public.
Well, yes.
And, and I will say I appreciate the heads up and stuff as that has happened. I I feel we could put something in a policy, but obviously that's that's fine, so.
We have a road crossing, Doug?
Uh, yes, we do. Um, we actually, there's two in the road right away. The first one is a request from Iowa Lakes out of Estreville. They would like to pour underground electric under four hundred tenth street. Um, this would be replacing some maintenance work, uh, upgrading the system that I recommended. This would be under four hundred tenth street at sixteen oh six four tenth street, square in township.
Mr. Stecker, would you like to make that motion?
Yeah, I would.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Whacter? Any discussion? Hearing on all votes in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried, unanimous.
And then, um, we do have some resurfacing that started last week and um, with all of our road construction, we do take official action. Uh, so there's a resolution in the pocket with a location map of the three resurfacing projects. Um, so the board would take that official action. Uh, these roads will be closed when they start.
Some of them.
When they start working.
I'll make the motion, I'll let Carter second it.
Yeah, I'll second.
I'll make a motion to approve the paving, Carter's second fit. Any discussion on the motion?
Do we need to say a resolution number?
Yes, oh five thirty twenty-three oh one. Any discussion on the resolution? If not, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Pla? Nah?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Darks?
Yes. Resolution carried.
Two documents that need to be signed.
There's that resolution, please, Tammy, if you could get that also. I should be right real nice.
Oh, thank you.
And that's the, uh, approval of the work in the road right on. Sooner or later, you're gonna learn some of that, John. All right, thank you. Soon we have a up to, uh, discussion with our engineer and zoning administrator.
Uh, right now, with the weekend, I'm trying to get caught up this morning. I know we do have a truck over in Decora that's being worked on. Um, and we have some other equipment, the transfer station loader is one that hopefully, it may have actually been repaired Friday afternoon, I'm not sure. But, uh, those two pieces of equipment are being worked on.
Is that truck a regenerator?
No, this one is, uh, out of the lead yard shop and it had some coolant problems and some transmission problems, so we just with our, our, uh, shop labor shortage right now, we've got it over there to get them working on that. Um, construction project Merriman's up at, uh, Lincoln Township, they are complete, or they've got it to a point where we need to get some, uh, guardrail blisters, we call them, to put the guardrail on, approach guardrail on the bridges. Um, and then we, I've not heard anything from the Seneca Gun Club, there's a bridge there. I've not heard anything from Rognitz about that project. I think they'll probably wait to get that in the next fiscal year. Um, however, we may be paying for some stockpiled materials. I know that that's precast culvert and those sections have been uh, may, they, they were completed last fall. Other than that, then like I say, got to work this morning, trying to get caught up on everything, so.
Any discussion for Doug other than what we've heard about today?
Do you know, is, uh, there was a truck in the west side shop that's been down for a while, do you know what the status of the man or? Or is that back?
I think it got back Carter last week. Yes, I'm aware of that situation.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
What's our status on hiring a mechanic or anything?
I actually have some background checks being done right now, and I need to talk to Donna to see what we're at.
Okay.
How many candidates do you got?
I ended up interviewing three.
Okay.
And Lead Yard John Turner's retired and I, there is an advertisement in the Sway City Bancroft, Albona Reminder and the Cassup County Advance, and we'll be getting that forwarded out to all the other places where we advertise. Um, I don't know if I'm gonna do a deed on that one. Seems like we usually get somebody local there, we'll see how it goes.
Which township did he take care of?
He took care of kind of s- south of the lead yard shop, the, the ethanol plant and gravel roads from Lakota over to one sixty-nine, kind of in that area. The ethanol plant in south and west.
Okay.
Jerry Johnson's area. John took over, was hired after Jerry retired.
Any other questions? If not, we're gonna take a break before dreaming?
Just, uh, was gonna say I went across the stuff in the Union Slough, uh, here this weekend, and that was significant improvement.
Good.
I drove over it this morning, it didn't even bounce.
The, the slurry level in Creve did finish up Friday.
Did they? They did a good job on the white house that I drove on.
Good.
Yeah.
I was.
You can, I can barely notice it going across the slough, but not much. You, you used to never, never miss it. But, yeah, no, it's, it's pretty smooth.
Good.
Yeah, that's why.
All right, thank you.
How did, how'd it turn out my Nick's place to dig a taddy?
We're gonna put, we're gonna put an asphalt patch on that. We did not have that, that's a, that's a big area, it's slurry. Um, so, we're gonna do that with asphalt.
Good.
So that's on our patching list.
Yeah.
Along, the priority patching though is like the four way bridge and any, the, the bridge there by the big six elevator and any other places where we had pavement construction last year. We gotta get those going first, so.
Do you have a timeline on any of them? Like when they? Do you have a timeline on any of them? Like when they'll?
Well, we do that with blacktop service and sometimes they call us up on a Monday and say we're ready to go. We got a map to them and we're ready to go. So, um, we're kind of at their mercy there.
Yep, thanks Doug.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
We're gonna take fifteen minute break before we start drainage.
Okay. Hey, you're gonna feel my toes again.
Yeah, me too.
Oh my god.
Yeah, you got some sun yesterday. You must've been outside a lot longer than I was.
Yeah, well, we had the, our, you know, of course our town deal, and Laverne and I, I mean, I was up and down about eleven to three, and then went over to the lake. Uh, from then till, when we were over there, probably seven, so. Yeah. Out on the water.
Yeah, yeah, that, uh, that all the sun.
Morning Joe.
I'll give you some sun.
Yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, I went out fishing and did put sunblock on, and I got my back towards the, yeah, yeah, it's, it's. Quick bird. Hold it back, don't worry.
I need my water cup, of course I lost that. I'll be right back. I was trying to call people back before I even got out of room.
Oh yeah, I was gonna say, my hygienist. Hey! Oh, I have to say that.
I, I can tell it's out.
I'll leave that. That'll help you that. I can smell you today.
I can trace that, we're good.
You're welcome.
It's okay.
How you doing?
Good, get some rain.
Yep.
Is it?
Yeah.
We get a drought here in town.
Oh, you're lucky or am I?
We're unlucky, we need it.
Yeah.
What crunch?
Crunch, crunch, crunch.
I tried to walk barefoot through the grass and it's rougher than heck.
Too good, yeah, too harder.
Harder my little tender feet.
Yeah.
It was about as dry as I've ever seen it. This time of year.
Dry, but wait till July and August if that farmers, if that almanac is right, that blue.
Lulania.
Comes in, it's supposed to be hot and dry.
I don't know. I thought El Nino was showing up.
Well, we're in that now, but it's gonna turn to Lulania or whichever one it is.
There's something blowing up?
Marge coming in?
Yep, she's on her way.
Good. Hmm, let's see, we gotta go to drainage.
Hey, Marge.
How?
How are you?
Not too bad.
Doing any fun this weekend?
The usual.
She got to.
Get up and go work, go out and field.
Do some spraying, decorate, decorate graves and go to the ceremony on Monday.
She got too late for chicken, she wasn't lucky like you, Jack, she missed the chicken.
Yep.
I was disappointed, we didn't, this is the first year in a long time that we had a service on the cemetery.
I'm, yeah, I know, so, yeah, so they're gonna rotate.
I would, I imagine next year we'll have, well, we're gonna get another priest, so in July, so we'll make a difference.
Could be, yeah, we're down to one.
St. Benedict's and Blessed.
St. Joel's.
We had St. Joel's.
St. Joel's and St. Benedict's.
This is Zachary, still can't spell his name.
I see the Z.
They're pointing at the signature?
Yeah.
You have, I already doctor signatures.
You're famished on the phone, aren't you?
Sure, you want me to?
Okay.
Yep. Are we ready to start drainage? Our first thing on the agenda is DD sixty sub one, change order, Marge, we have it in our folder, you have any comments on it?
No, I don't.
Pretty straightforward, anybody got any questions?
It's.
Three different. Huh? Yeah, it's all for.
All for rock.
P, one, two, and three. If there's no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the change order for DD sixty sub one, and it's the second pay order request.
Second change order, yeah, I'd make that motion.
Mr. Stecker makes the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Whacter. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Posed, motion carried unanimously. Our next one is pay app number four for DD sixty sub one. Any discussion on this, Marge, before we make a motion?
Straightforward.
Any questions? That's great, just the amount of work that's done so far, getting caught up, so I'd make the motion to approve.
Stecker makes the motion to approve, do I have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the pay app, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Next one is change order three for DD four FEMA repair.
And this would be, um, the final one, this is the rectification of quantities which that every engineering firm does at the end, so there's the pipe kinda balanced out, um, plus and minus in the different sizes. The big change is additional rock that was needed for different areas of the ditch, but other than that, it's pretty self-explanatory, I guess. Any questions?
FEMA approved the rock, originally they said that they wouldn't approve rock, now they're approving rock.
Well, they're, they're approving rock based on engineers' recommendations, that we don't have anything black and white that they're approving it, but we've already gotten money based on the payoffs that were submitted so far, which had rock included, so it is, it is a portion of the project, but we had to keep it limited, so, yeah. So. There's nothing else.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve this change order as well.
Do I have a second to approve the work, change order three for DD four for FEMA repairs? I'll second it. We need FEMA to approve it.
Yeah.
Is there any, any questions on the order? Seeing those questions, all those in favor of change order three for DD four FEMA repairs, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried unanimously. Pay app seven. For DD four FEMA repairs, Mr. Stecker, you have any comments on this one?
Um, this is kind of getting up to the final payment, or it's, it's semi-final, but we're still, we still have the retained edge, so that would be, that would be the final.
This would be for everything but the.
But, but the retained edge, which, yeah, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand in retained edge, so, um.
It pays the last hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents.
Which they are eligible for, yep.
Correct.
So.
Does anybody have any questions on it, whether it should be paid or not?
This. Retaining to what we looked at here?
Yeah, yeah.
I guess. With the concern of landowners, I mean, has, has stuff been, how do we handle that through the engineer and through?
So that's the retained edge, that hundred and thirty-eight thousand will be addressed at the completion hearing, so the process of that will be coming forward in the future.
Yep.
My question is, do you think it has more than a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars that been left undone?
Nah, I would say not even close.
Uh.
Um, I know Tyler's kinda got a tab of certain things, I've seen a couple thousand here and there, I think the biggest one is five thousand, or close to five, or, um, Mike Kaler. So, I mean, I feel that one thirty-eight is more than sufficient to cover all the damages that, that I'm aware of at least.
That includes, I think there's two or three tile outlets that he missed that really it should be up to the contractor to put in and fix.
That were missed completely?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
Do we think it's appropriate to have him come in and fix them, and they should be at his nickel because he missed them?
I would say that should be addressed at the completion hearing out of the retained edge, if that's how, um, you like to handle it. They, they can be made to be brought back for work that fails due to, um, workmanship and all that. Um, if they were completely missed, that'd probably be a conversation with the engineer and contractor.
I, uh, think it should be, some of that should be addressed before the completion hearing, and.
What, what location are the ones that were completely missed? In, where at Stein Farms?
One in Ed's, one's in a different one, and I, my memory isn't perfect.
There's one for, um, Vaskies, right on these.
And that's the third one.
Okay.
So there'd be three.
Um.
The other one I seen.
Which that one, they, they did, they did do a substantial amount of exploration there, could not find, could not find it, and the landowners did not have a very precise location on where that was, so.
Yep.
There's only so much we're gonna be able to do until it shows itself.
Well, there's two that I seen were, were coming out of the bank where there's no pipe. And I think maybe they should be completed before we have the completion hearing. I'll ask Tyler.
Yeah, I mean, talking to Tyler, I'd say it'd be the best thing, but I don't, I don't think any of that would apply to this payout.
Okay. If you're comfortable.
From, from everything I'm aware of, I think the retained edge that we have is more than sufficient.
Even once fixing that.
Oh, yeah.
It'll be, it'll be fine, yeah.
Couple pipes won't be that big a deal.
As long as everybody's satisfied, I wanna make sure.
And the retained edge is on, I mean, it's spelled out in the contract, retained edge is ten percent, we can't, I don't feel like we can hold anymore just because.
No.
So. I'd make the motion to approve the.
Do I have a second, Mr. Stecker's motion? Carter, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Marge, you have a few drainage repairs again?
Yes. Just kind of.
There we go.
I didn't, I didn't see the jealousy.
You have a library?
You wanna stack?
No.
You wanna start with your one?
Sure. I'll start my one, I have one in Motts Creek, be number fifty-four, it's in PK one, uh, there's a broken tile, and it was turned in by Keith Truylin. And I have Reichel putting in a cattle crossing a couple miles away, so I said, why don't you just go up and fix it, so Reichel's gonna fix it.
Okay. First one I got is forty-six, Lincoln section eight for Arlen Velvick, um, check the outlet pipe in the ditch, and then there's broken tile in the field. We got forty-seven Springfield twenty-two for Ken Amen, Newman, um, large washout in CRP, looks like. Number forty-eight, Hebron section thirteen, outlet pipes bent down, broken, needs repaired and placed for Dave Halverson. Forty-nine Harrison thirty-three, um, Ed Stein requests three loads of black dirt to repair ditch bank and one load of rock to repair. Sir, do you know what that load of rock was for?
I think he's gonna put it where the, some of the dirt was washed down on the side of the banks. Carter, you talked about it when Carter and I were out there.
Okay, um. Previously with this one, we had discussed doing the drone flight and handling all these at the completion hearing. Um, is everyone? Yeah, is everyone in agreement with throwing that in the pile for that?
Kinda like we're doing pack one, where it's all gonna be under one.
Yep, okay. And number fifty is Darlene Ray for leveling spoil on drain four in Ramsey eighteen and nineteen. And this is another one for the completion hearing, which that is already done, and they are very satisfied with the work. Number fifty-one, Lead Yard, section three, broken tile for Bill Mavis, and it says grant repair, is that already done?
Yeah.
Okay. Fifty-two is Grant, section twenty-two, Dale Colash, did he already do it for two spots, broken tile?
Yeah, Dale's supposed to have it repaired.
Okay, okay, for Dale Peterson and Brian Minow. And last one, Grant, section sixteen, broken tile, needs repair for Brian Minow again, and Dale Colash is on that one, so. Do you call in to you, Marge, or you talk to you?
Call in.
Call in to you, okay. Sounds good, that's my.
Some of them can't get used to calling you yet.
That's fine.
Do I have a motion for the supervisors to take care of the drainage issues? Mr. Plath made the motion, Mr. Whacter seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried unanimously. And we are right on time at ten oh one to open the public hearing for DD four, lad eleven.
I'll make the motion to open the public hearing.
Carter will second it. I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Do a roll call those, please.
Plath.
Yes.
Snaff.
Yes.
Whacter.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes. The public hearing is open, open, Mr. Wiedemeyer, you're getting ready.
Alright, yeah.
You wanna hook into the.
Yeah, um, I have a longer cord, so I can reach my computer and talk up here at the same time.
Okay.
Guys having a busy morning so far?
Yes. Can't say that, we didn't aim in right yet, but.
We're all getting there, right?
I think some are done, but.
The others?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I didn't. Right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can up like that, yeah.
Yep.
Gotcha.
We try and make it as complicated as possible here. Especially for engineers.
Guys, I shouldn't know if yours.
It's not like you spend a couple minutes on them.
You want the light?
I'll light the light. Racing in the chairs now?
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't want her to fall on the chairs.
Let's try to remember where the presentation button is.
Um.
Slide two on the top.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, yeah, I spent all my time putting these together in just a few minutes looking for that button. Alright, so, uh, here we are at the DD four lateral eleven completion hearing. Um, so, I was fortunate enough to bump into Rich just a few minutes ago, and we talked about which completion hearing is today. So, so while I was sitting there, I made a point, if you get, this is, this is what we're looking at, so if you guys are here with questions on another ditch, uh, that might be for a different day, but what we're looking at today is lateral eleven, which, uh, Bancroft is right here to the southwest of lateral eleven, this is a north-south general eleven ditch, and that's what we'll be talking about.
Yeah, the radio had it wrong today, they said DD four on the radio, they didn't put lad eleven.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so they probably had a few people confused.
Yeah, I suppose, well, I mean, they, they all, DD four is connected to it, but yeah, not, not a part of this. Um, so, without further ado, we'll get into it. Purpose of this hearing is to consider the completion of planned repairs made to lateral eleven. So, this is an open forum for any questions or concerns in relation to the completion of the work that was done. And we can also talk about written damage claims if you have them, um, if you wanna talk about them, that's fine, but um, at the end of the day, for anything to be done, it needs to be put in writing, even if it's just on a quick piece of paper, and handed into the office. So, at the outcome of this meeting, what we'll do is we'll either accept the completion of the work, um, or we'll extend for a further investigation, go back, look at some things, fix anything if we need it, and, uh, and delay the completion. If we accept the completion today, what happens is we release the retained edge, and just a reminder on what that is, uh, as the contractor does the work, we hold ten percent of the cost of what they've done, um, to make sure that they do a correct job and they do what we asked them to, and then, once we have ticked all the boxes, we give them that ten percent. So that's what we're holding today, um, and if everything's good, we'll go ahead and release that to the contractor. So, a little bit of a background, um, again, the location of lateral eleven, uh, stretches from section nineteen of Ramsey Township up to section six of Ramsey Township, uh, just a couple of miles. Uh, and it outlets into the main open ditch of DD four. Um, much larger ditch, but it's just to the east of Bancroft and a little bit to the south. The original length of this ditch was fourteen thousand, one hundred and sixty feet, and alongside this project, um, this ditch was shortened a little bit, and replaced, the top end of the ditch was replaced with tile, so now it's about thirteen thousand, four hundred feet long. And, uh, we can get into that in just a minute. Well, or we can get into it right now. Um, so, just, just a quick overview of the work that was done, um, anywhere where you see red is where we did most of our work. We also replaced a number of tile outlets and surface drains, um, along the entirety of the ditch. Uh, but where you see red is where we are generally, uh, dipping and pulling out sediment from the bottom. And then, at the very top end, the north end there, is where the ditch was replaced with tile. So, construction costs, uh, the original contract that was let was for a hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and zero cents. Uh, we had negative twenty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifteen cents worth of change orders, so, um, we overestimated the amount of pipe that this was gonna take and a few other items. Um, so that brought the total cost down to, uh, I wanna say, yeah, it'd be a hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. Um, and so, in that, we held ten percent retained edge, which comes to eleven thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-one cents. That's really the long and the short of what I have, so, I'm going to questions. You guys have any questions?
I got, here, I'm gonna answer the six points, that William Merritt, who you haven't seen, would like to make it. I didn't generate the record. Thank you.
Do you want a copy?
We'll just go down through these six points and discuss them. I don't think I wanna delay the closing, but I think there's some things here that should be looked at. Um, now, Dan, uh, we went out there a week ago, just to inspect the physical project.
Okay.
And we looked at the end of the ditch, where you put that, I don't know what you call it, it's a crap or?
The generic term is, uh, tied concrete block, block mat, and they flex that and.
And you were, you've been out there and looked to see how it was installed and?
Yeah, we, we went out there, um, for the install, and then, so, so, the one other thing, we went out and made sure.
Okay, one of the things I saw, and I've got pictures of it, is it looks to me like what you have there is a waterway extending like an eighth to a quarter of a mile into the name of the field, that's gonna bring right into there, and the problem I see with that is if you get a rain and you're doing actual pillage, you're gonna get siltation in that ditch.
Okay.
And that wasn't caused by anybody here in the drainage district or anything like that, that was caused by somebody wanting just to close the ditch. So, who's gonna pay for this field run one? And we gotta clean the end of that ditch out. That, that's my point, point number one. I think we should consider that, 'cause most of the time where I see something like that, they generally have the grass water. You know what I'm saying? To bring the water into the field and then.
Sure.
Put a layer.
Want to show to him and address the board?
And I've already noticed some silt, and I got pictures of some silt already, and maybe when that comes up with grass and stuff, a lot of these, uh, bulkheads, they kinda prevent water from directly going right into, you know, so, they originally have something that keeps the soil out of the ditch.
Joe, is your issue with Mr. Wiedemeyer or the board?
Well, I think we just should consider for the.
We can't hear you, come back there.
Do you wanna explain to him what you're talking about?
Joe.
If, if anyone.
I wanna move up to that chair.
Yeah, if anyone from the public wants to address the board, they need to come up and run here.
The issue is the way the end of the ditch was designed. When you go out to take a look at it, it looks like that there's a waterway that extends an eighth to a quarter of a mile up into the field. Uh, and if he keeps killing it the way he does, and we get a big rain, you're gonna get siltation down into the ditch. So, that wasn't created by the drainage system. So, that wasn't created by the drainage system. That's, you know what I'm saying, you know, so who's gonna pay if, if, let's hope it doesn't happen. But the way it looks to me like there's a pretty good probability that the end of that ditch is gonna fill in. That's the way that's constructed, I, that's just me looking at it, I'm not a professional, that's, I've seen your old trim and...
Sure.
That's what I'm concerned about, so, why should the district be paying for something that can be avoided?
Are those acres in the district, Mr. Wiedemeyer?
Yeah, well, to, to answer the siltation question, I would argue that we put in today is better than what we had before, for a couple reasons, one, what we put in was this, was this block mat, and a way to describe that is, if you can imagine, well, kinda like you described, we, we made a transition from the fields around to the ditch, and, and in fact, a transition that's meant to channel water from the fields around to the bottom. A headwall does the exact same thing, what it does is it boxes the end of the ditch and makes it so that any water that is transitioning from those fields goes over the headwall and doesn't eat out around the ditch. But, what that headwall, what the headwall doesn't do is it doesn't prevent silt, any, any water that comes over that headwall takes everything with it and goes right over there. What we did was we got rid of the headwall, we put it in this mat, that, what the mat is meant to do is temporarily hold the size of the ditch in place, and then allow grass to grow up through it to lock the mat in place, so what you end up with is a, a slow transition from top to bottom that has grass along that entire length of the transition. Now, it takes a little bit for the grass to grow up, especially, especially if it stays like, like, like you and I were talking about with drought, um, but, the mat that they put in is, has this, it's a, if you can imagine, a fishing net and then a layer of, of straw with seed infused into the straw, and then, I wanna say there's kind of a landscaping grid underneath that, but the idea is it's supposed to make the best possible scenario for seed growth. So, yeah, it's not a grass waterway through the entirety of the district, but that's not something that, that we asked for either, and that's not something that we had before. So, what we have today, I would argue, is a better situation from the silt sample.
Well, kind of, yeah.
Yeah.
I just, that was my observation.
Sure, yeah, it's worth, that's, it, these are all things that are great to bring up at a closing meeting, thank you.
Alright, uh, point number two, uh, there's a junction box located in section thirty-six of Harrison Township that's got a fifteen, eighteen, and twenty-four inch tile coming into it, and then, uh, that box exit, the twenty-four and thirty-inch goes out, the thirty-inch going out services the twenty-four coming in and has very little flow. I mean, I got a video of it, it's just about stagnant. The twenty-four inch services the fifteen and eighteen coming in and has rapid flow, and I get, like I say, you can just visibly, visibly, visibly see that. The box is designed for water to cross over. The district has headwater over the twenty-four inch coming in, and the thirty-inch should have better flow rate unless something is particularly flowing. Now, what I mean by headwater is I, I drove where the pipes, it has really nothing to do with the ditch, but it does when it comes to the outlet. You see what I'm saying? When I say about headwater, there was standing water in the fields over that twenty-four inch tile that comes into the box that turns to thirty, okay?
Okay.
So that should give it pressure.
Sure.
And I've heard some other, there's some complaints that there's some problems in means to waterline preference, and that's fine, but still, we have headwater over that. Now, when I read the records, uh, there's two, there should have been two lines at the end of the open ditch specifically dug out to, and that open ditch to convert, you know, this line here. That was specifically dug out to, uh, services relief that's on your map. And then, Ambrose Kenny, he was a farm owner at the time, trusted open banker, had put several repair requests in which referred to the two-relief tile put in, and they were thirty-two and thirty-six. Now, what my question is, where's the second relief line? As there is only one coming into the forty-eight inch outlet directly south of the end of the open ditch, northeast, on the northeast of the northwest section seven of Ramsey Township, and that's, you can see there's two lines, three lines coming in there, from that top right there.
I'm talking about, uh, right up here?
Yep.
Okay.
The only pipe coming into that field there is either thirty-two or thirty-six and one sixteen. And your map shows in twenty nineteen that you have a sixteen coming in on the east side of the field, that's not there.
The six, on the east side of what?
Well, if you look at my exhibit one, there, there's the back. I got it, I'll show you, this is your two thousand nineteen version.
Okay.
This is the thirty-two, they transitioned that thirty-two of thirty-two, and they come down here, and then you say it transitions to a sixteen. That's on your map, that was offered in twenty nineteen, it was approved by this board.
Sure.
So, okay, I wouldn't say that maybe one of the reasons why that water's moving slowly up in that box, is we have restriction down here.
That's the argument?
Yeah, that's the argument. I think we have a restriction that, I put in repair requests here just last, just last week after we, you and I went out there and looked at it, that line is definitely restricted, and I think it, it has the ability to cross over to the twenty-four because the records that are there, since they were gonna design that thirty-six to hit over those tiles. So if you got one coming straight down, like, if I see in that forty-eight, where's the second one? And if, and if you gotta have backflow on that thirty-six to get over to the twenty-four, and now it's gotta wait until the twenty-four clears out and then it's, so, it's on now. That's what I think. So I think by altering, I just think there's, there's a problem there, and the records show that the end of that ditch was specifically dug out for that thirty-six entry, and that thirty is not growing.
Yeah, I mean, we only tied a ten and a sixteen into the thirty, that's, that's all we found right there. Well, excuse me, no, it'd be a ten, sixteen, and then there were a couple, I believe, eight-inch tiles, uh, one...
Yeah, okay, I know, yeah.
And another one further to the south, yeah.
Jay had a new main coming in there, and then, I think Steve had a private that you don't see on your maps.
Yeah, that new main would have been put in just about the time when we redid this, yeah.
A little earlier, yeah.
Yeah, but then...
They had that other one, and that's another mistake, I think on the map, that's this, L eleven B is what you're talking about. This one right here. That actually came down into this ditch here, that's what Rachel figured out.
Oh, so it would be a twelve, two of fourteen, and then, two of sixteen when it outlets to the ditch.
Oh, boy, see, they came here, yeah, something like that, there were three pipes coming in and in that ditch.
Yeah, at the time of construction, at the time of surveying, it would have just been two, the third one would be the one that Jay put in.
Right, yeah, that could be, now, that's right, 'cause you started looking at this background like twenty nineteen.
It's, yeah, it's been a little bit, um, and, and when I say three, so it would be, it used to be a wood headwall boxed in. So there were two pipes in the headwall, and then there was another, I said eight, might have been one of the six, there was such as, there was this plastic pipe just kinda flopped into the bottom of the ditch, off to the side of the headwall, but maybe, maybe fifty feet south of it, but yeah, again...
What side of the, what was that?
Would have been, would have been to the southeast, I, I walked that thing a few times, and, and again, this is one, it was laying in the bottom, like, covered up with grass. I think I almost tripped over it, and that's the only reason I found it, but, but yeah.
'Cause I saw two timbered soles.
Yep, yeah.
One on the other side of, uh, New Main, uh, was put in that center, that's what I saw.
Yep, yeah, most have been there for, there a long time.
Yeah, that's right, they look like. Okay, where are we at here now? So I think that's gonna have to be investigated a little bit, and then you're gonna have to decide, I don't know what they're gonna find, maybe they'll find nothing. You know, I don't know what they're gonna find.
Sure.
If that guy cut off, we got a problem.
I would be, I guess I would be surprised if it was, 'cause you'd think you'd start to see issues in that field.
Yeah, but if it's laying flat, I don't know. Yeah, just start down.
There's several sections up in here, there's, uh, there's a lot going on.
That's right. Alright. Okay, let's go here, I think I'm pretty, if I come down, my item three, and here is a little bit of a problem that I see that kinda goes on here, this is more towards the supervisors than anything, I got a list of warrants that are over two years old. Now, I don't mind paying a guy, I think the work that they did is okay, but what I don't like is when the district has to pay more interest than they're legally obligated to. And if you read four sixty-eight, one twenty-seven, all these warrants have to be dished out, they can't be over two years old. That's kind of the law, I've kind of been seeing the board here, kind of going a little bit beyond here, so I told them up here, yeah, thirty-two thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-six cents, you know, I don't mind paying the clerk, but I just, you know, I think they could have spread out the warrants out earlier so that the district, if somebody didn't wanna pay the interest, they could have avoided paying the interest. Now, you might say, well, that's what we do, well, you have two warrants on the next page that were distributed at the proper time for the same project. You know, and, and the only thing I would complain about is the extra interest that's property exactly.
There's no money you can't pay. Right.
Yeah, but that, you have to spread it so you can get the money.
The project wasn't done, we don't spread it until the project's done.
It don't make a bit of difference, Roger, if you read the law, you can be in the middle of a project, and if those warrants are getting to be two years old, you gotta spread them, the only way you can avoid that is if you, um, if you allow the waiver of those, but then you have to give the people the right to decide whether they wanna pay the extra interest or not. You have to start that. That's the law. So, these guys aren't gonna hear from me, so that's fine. Okay, now, the other thing I noticed in the records is that we have two, um, invoices, it's on item number four, there's fourteen sixteen ninety and fourteen twenty-five oh six, and it looks like McClure Engineering did something for Jay Goshi, now, Jay Goshi said he was gonna pay for all this, blind in the ditch and all that, so I would think that, uh, if he promised to pay that, that those two invoices should go to Jay.
Dan, do you wanna talk on that?
Sure.
I think, and Phil?
Yeah. So, so we opted to track that, so we have full transparency on what's going on, and what those were for was, you know, Jay says, hey, I wanna, I wanna put a tile in where this ditch is at. Well, okay, that's, how do you go about that? Well, if, if you are gonna do it, we wanna make sure that the district is, or that the tile is a district standard, so it's not put in a haphazard way that's gonna cause issues with the ditch. Um, so, make sure of that, there's, there's engineering fee that goes along with that. So what we did was we said, okay, um, Jay, you need to hire an engineer to put this design in paper and submit it, but she went ahead and hired Jacobson Westergaard for that, and then, McClure, representing the district and the landowners of the district, will look over that plan and make sure that it's put in a kind of method that's, that we feel is beneficial to the district, assuming, again, that Jay pays for, pays for putting that in for you to do. Now, what, now, we wanted to track those engineering costs to see what they looked like at the end of this, with the potential to charge those to Jay. Now, the thing that we see along with that is, when you filled in the ditch, we had, again, we were talking about, four existing pipes on that section of ditch, not including the new one that he put in, but there was the two, the two whistles that we saw in the headwall, there's a smaller one just a little south of it, and then there's another one just kinda by the fence line to the south where we ended the ditch. All of those would have required new tin pipes put on, and that's what we had to do as part of the project, was to go ahead and put those in. In addition to, if we want to rip rappel around those to, to protect those, and also, um, as we moved, I'll, I'll get into that. Anyways, all of that added up to more money than what my engineering bill would come out to be. So, one thing we talked about, and we can talk about this as part of the hearing, was, since, since he ended up saving the district money as part of that, then we would just call the engineering fee a wash, but that could be a discussion topic for right now, absolutely. The other thing that he saved on was, well, we talked about that transition from field above to field below, and how we use that grid map, there, we ended up using a hundred and twenty-seven less fee than that, so, at the end of the day, all of it doesn't boil out to a ton of money, but my engineering cost was less than the money that was saved in moving this headwall for it to the south. That's what I got.
And that's one thing I'll say, is I appreciate the project coming in for us, what it was bid for, but it was bid for doing the entire ditch. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so, why, I'm just going by what Jay said, he said he'd pay for all the engineering costs, all the costs the district paid.
Sure.
And the district would probably like to see that happen, you know, I mean, if you just get on the phone, starts calling, do you wanna pay the bill or you wanna, you know, go tell ya. Okay, that's, that's that deal. Now, Kyle, he made a statement back in January that sixty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-two cents were FEMA funds that were obligated for DD four lateral eleven, and he said that Roger dropped the ball on that. And I, I went through all the records, Mr. Stecker, I didn't see any record of anything pertaining to the sixty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-two cents for FEMA obligations, so what, and I never got any records from you, 'cause you said you were gonna give me the records, and I never got no records.
That was for a different project, that was returned for, but...
It had nothing to do with DD eleven, or DD four eleven.
Those, those funds did not have any...
So, why did you make that statement?
There, there was FEMA funds, um, eligible for this project, but that was not the specific funds that were returned at that point in time, it was for a different project.
So what are the, what's the line of the FEMA funds that you're gonna use on this project?
There's...
None.
When they did a review, they determined the damage didn't qualify for FEMA, it was before, before the eligible FEMA funds. The damage happened before two thousand eighteen.
Right.
And that would be like the sixteen that comes in on section seven.
Well, the, the original damage was the outlets were forced, they were under mud, and we dipped, we dipped the outlets, and that was before any damage occurred that was FEMA related. So we can't turn it into FEMA.
The, the general description is, there was, there's things that needed attention in the ditch like siltation and broken pipes and stuff like that, and rusted pipes in particular was an obvious sign that it is from a lack of maintenance over years rather than a specific event that qualified for the presidential disaster declaration, so it was damage that was already there prior to this project happening, so it was not eligible.
It didn't fall under the FEMA.
It was not eligible for FEMA funds.
Okay, now, Mr. Stecker, you choose Glenn and Mary Goshen, obviously have taken four hundred acres off of DD four hundred and eleven, you made public statements to that effect, and, uh, you guys as trustees voted to spend engineering fees and legal fees to say we took water off the... And you guys as trustees voted to spend engineering fees and legal fees to say we took water off of DD four lot eleven. Jay Goshi came before the board with the same statement on DD eighty lot eighty, and the trustees voted to allow Jay Goshi off of DD eighty lot eighty. The difference in the William Mary Gochi case is the trustees are making these statements, not Johnny, come lately, property owner. William and Mary Gochi only have a hundred and fifty-three acres that are assessed to these districts. Fifty acres are assessed to DD eighty, therefore, since the trustees appear to already be in agreement on this, William and Mary Gochi are asked when to be taken off DD four lot eleven outlet on the fifty acres that will be promptly legally framed to DD eighty as the overlapping assessment schedules. And the two, two thousand nineteen Sioux County Drainage Plan Book, also by McClure Engineering and approved by Sioux County Supervisors at the same, at the time of the installation, refused to guide the drainage installed on this track. The drainage legally installed by William and Mary Gochi LLC should be a greater benefit to DD four lot eleven as the outlet is currently having some restricted flow issues on the thirty-inch pipe coming out of the junction box on Harrison thirty-six, possibly due to a modified outlet allowed by the Sioux County Supervisor Trustees for Jay Goshi's benefit. The historical approval taken by this board of trustees on DD eighty lot eighty, allowing Jay Goshi off of thirty-three thousand dollars assessment, just because Jay Goshi said he took water off DD eighty lot eighty and diverted it to DD four lap three illegally, that Jay Goshi was not even assessed in DD four lap three at the time and was allowed to stay attached to DD eighty lap eighty and not pay for the improvement to DD eighty lot eighty. We're requesting it be permanently taken off of DD four lap four on the old, on the fifty acres that are on this track that we took to DD eighty, and we did it legally.
Well, I, I would say there's a lot of opinions in that statement you just shared, but I, I don't think that should be handled at this point with this hearing and pending litigation that's in process. I don't think that should be addressed right now.
I don't think, can say any more than that.
Uh, yeah, yeah. That's, that's all I had, but.
I would stop you from saying anything else. Anybody in, excuse me, in the audience have anything to say about DD four lot eleven hearing? And public comment? If not, I would entertain the motion to close the public hearing. Some of them. Motion by Whacter, second by Stecker. Do a roll call vote, please.
Black?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Jerbs?
Yes. Let the record show that no decision was made during the public hearing. At this time, I would, Mr. Wiedemeyer, what would you like us to do as far as the public hearing and as far as motions to be made?
Do you want to, do you want to flip back to your PowerPoint for the next steps or whatever? Um, in the beginning, I think you had it.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, uh, to accept the work and release your retainage.
We can do that in one motion. Are you satisfied with that?
That's a good question. I think it's always been in one motion.
It's always been in one motion, but I want you to be satisfied today with that.
Yeah.
I would entertain a motion to approve the report and pay out the retainage.
I would, yeah, move to accept the completion of the work and release the retainage.
Mr. Stecker made the motion. Do I have seconds? Carter? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Do a roll call vote, please.
Black?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Jerbs?
Yes.
And actually, just for, um, your sake, I don't know if you know, the retainage is paid thirty days after the completion hearing. So it's not today or tomorrow, but it will be scheduled.
Any other issues to come before DD four lot eleven?
Hearing's already closed, so.
Yeah. Hearing none. We will go on with our other business and go back into our general session.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. We are up to a discussion with our auditor.
Um, since, um, the jail starts getting ready for lunch at eleven, could we do that after we come back from that jail?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
Josh, will you call Bailey at extension four zero five and see if, if, um, she's ready for us?
Got a busy day planned.
I head up to sixty sub one.
Got.
It's my little map.
Might be a little wet.
Actually, it's Josh over here in the board room.
Are you guys ready for us?
All right, perfect. We'll be up shortly. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
You guys have a busy day as well, too?
Just a couple of things after this, not too much.
We get to do it too.